I call this meeting to order. The Effingham County Planning Board Meeting of December 12th, 2023. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We're going to begin this meeting with a word of prayer. We're going to follow the prayer with the pledge of allegiance. And we'd like to ask that everyone would stand with us if you can for both, please. Let's Mr. Ryan Thompson open us.
Dear God and Father, please give us wisdom for discussion and decisions and recommendations that will be made on the items before us tonight. Also, please help us all in this room and beyond the folks in this room to remember what this month and this season's all about. It's the birth of your son, Jesus Christ. And also, please, as always, keep those that protect us both domestically and abroad at the forefront of our thoughts throughout the year. We love you. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Our agenda, is our agenda complete? Is there, are there any changes? No changes? I'll call for a motion to approve this agenda.
Motion to approve.
Which for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Zipper. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Minutes from November 14th. Are there any changes? Call for a motion to approve these minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Higgins. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. When is our county commissioners' meeting?
January 16th.
January 16th. So, all items presented tonight will be presented again at our Board of Commissioners' meeting. That meeting is on January 16th. It is also in this room, 6 o'clock PM. It's a public hearing. Items that are approved is or denied will move forward to the county commissioners', this recommendation board. We'd like to ask that everyone who wishes to speak tonight, when the item of your concern is called, excuse me, that you would come forward to the podium, that you would sign your name, as well as state your name for the record. And these meetings are being taped, so we'd like to ask that all comments made tonight are made into the microphone. And please keep all comments directed to the board or the staff. There's nothing further? Under new business, we have a public hearing for Craig Johnson, request a conditional use to allow for a private and public event venue.
Have an old business.
Oh, we do, I'm sorry. We have one item under old business. This was tabled on November 14th. Howard Lemon III requests a conditional use for a residential business located at 112 Berry Lane. It's the 3rd district. Is Ms. Chelsea or Sammy, do you have this information?
Yes, sir. So, if you would like, I can, I can explain again, or Mr. Lemon can come.
Could you come forward to the podium, please, sir?
It's up to you.
And sign here?
Yes, sir, please. Good evening. Could you tell us about your proposal and plan?
Yeah, well, I went to get a business license, I guess, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Went to get a business license, and the ladies told me that I had to file for a conditional use because of zoning. So, that's what I'm here for.
And you're looking to operate a taxidermy business, is that correct?
Yeah, just in my shed behind the house.
Right. And I'm sure staff has made you aware of the size requirements, maximum space that you can use as a residential business?
I don't know the requirements, but I told them how big my shed was.
Okay. How big is the shed?
12 by 16, with a 11 by 16 lean to.
Questions or comments from the board?
This is not one where we have an issue with it being inside the primary residence?
So, for a residential business, that is one of the requirements. So, we are working to rewrite, as you're aware, the business license ordinance. Because the applicant needs the shed to do his business outside of his home, and because we're working on the ordinance, and also because the zoning is our one within the subdivision, we did bring this forward as a residential business, as opposed to a rural business. You know, we will leave this up to your discretion, because we are reworking that ordinance. We did place three conditions on our approval. Our recommendation for approval, and that was that the applicant would provide proof of residence, obtain the business license that he did apply for, and then get in writing from environmental health that approval and extra waste disposal to eliminate noxious odors or hazards that may endanger the health, safety, welfare of the neighborhood.
Right.
So.
So, we've discovered that a home occupation doesn't always mean it's inside the house. So, that's why we're rewriting it.
I believe in the past, we've allowed residential businesses to be in accessory structures, you know, considering.
Can you point out his house from the aerial view there?
Yes, sir, it is right here.
And that's the shed?
Yes, this square, right here, is the shed.
Are you currently operating the taxidermy shop there now?
Yes, sir.
What are you doing with the waste?
It goes to Gone Wild Processing in their dumpster. And I have a letter here that says that they give me permission to do it.
What was the name of the company?
Gone Wild Processing.
Okay, thank you.
Where are they located?
Off Lorenzo Hurst.
All right, I don't have any other questions.
Any further questions or comments at this time?
Maybe somebody.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? Close public comment, I just would like to remind the board, this is a residential business, and this is the final stop for this item. We will not go forward to county commissioners.
Mr. Chair, can we have a copy of that letter from the, yeah?
Yeah, who do I give it to?
You can give it to Peter if you want, yeah?
I don't care for it.
You need a copy back, or is that a copy for us?
Well, I made it just for the night, but.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anything further from the board? I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Thompson. All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, moving on to new business. Item number one, Craig Johnson requests a conditional use to allow for a private and public event venue in AR1 located at 1625 Stillwell Road. This is the 4th district. Now, Ms. Chelsea, do you have?
Yes, sir. So, the applicant is requesting the conditional use to have a wedding venue and hold private functions. Staff and the applicant did meet for the technical review committee meeting, and we spoke of things like buffers, access management, well-inseptic, and the conditional use process. The applicant is working with our building official and fire inspector, and has submitted an updated building permit for the pole barn. And they are ensuring that the building complies with all applicable international building code and fire code. So, staff is recommending alternative number one, and then with the, with the following conditions that are stated on your staff report.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Ms. Chelsea this time? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Craig Johnson. Basically, the location is just outside of Springfield, Stillwell Road, 1625. It's approximately a little under 5,000 square feet under roof, a little under 3,000 square feet where the seating area, his and her bathrooms, handicap accessible, serving room, prep kitchen only, and my storage room was turned into a bride's room, according to my daughter. So, I've lost storage. I'm roughly a little over 300-plus feet from the nearest residence. There is a wood line buffer plus power lines. I own the, I don't know if you got it up there, own the property to the right towards Stillwell. So, I have another, from my line to my other line is roughly 150 feet. So, I'm another 300-plus from, from the existing other property owner. So, I'm here for any questions or concerns you might have.
All right, I'll open it up to the floor for questions.
I think just a clarification helps. There's actually an adjacent parcel that you own that's not part of this use application.
Correct.
Are you planning to park cars from that adjacent parcel for these events that would be part of this application?
The, the property that this, the parcel that this event is, the building sits on, is plenty of parking for what I can handle inside the building.
Okay. Just want to be clear that this isn't just for that piece of property, it's not beyond it. I think it's a benefit that he does on that adjacent piece, additional controls, but.
Yeah. Septic system's in, been approved, private well. They're getting with the fire marshal, but yes, there are smoke alarms that are all linked together. There will be fire extinguishers in place. There are exit signs hardwired above the two exits in the main room. There is also an exit out of the kitchen area itself.
What's the capacity of that 5,000 square?
Well, 5,000 is just under roof, so we're a little under 3 as far as capacity. We're going 125, looking at some of the things you can have, depending on what it is, whether it's rectangle tables or round tables. But 125, we're pretty much gonna mow it max. I know when you have cocktail tables and it's all standing, your people rate increases, but as far as the septic, what it can handle, we're looking about 125. And this is mainly gonna be more weekend-type stuff. There can be some, maybe next Christmas, some Christmas parties and things like that during the week. There are a couple other venues here in the county. Some are open. This is totally enclosed, there's 13 tons of air inside the building. I have a spray foam roof, there's six-inch walls. So, I did go in there just, just to see, and I cranked the stereo system up, walked outside, and I could barely hear a muffle. So, I don't think we'll be disturbing the pine trees growing anywhere else around me.
So, nothing's outdoors, as far as other?
No, no, I have plenty of space inside. I know a lot of the venues are limited to their space inside and require outside tents for overflow, but I don't, I don't need that. So, no, there won't be anything outside, other than the smokers.
Gotcha. Any further questions at this time? Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Sorry.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? Nothing further from the board, I'll call for a motion. Make a motion to approve with staff? Have a motion for approval, is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Higgins, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item two, public hearing for Thompson Family Enterprise LLC, doing business as Scotty's Potties and Dumpsters, requests a conditional use for a rural business located at 200 Little McCall Road. This is the 3rd district.
Yes, sir. So, the applicant requests the conditional use for a rural business to operate a portable restroom and dumpster business on a portion of the property. Staff and the applicant did meet for a technical review committee meeting. We did discuss, discuss buffers, access, the conditional use process. The applicant did explain that the business would consist of about 100 portable restrooms and five to six dumpsters, and that the applicant was looking into a commercial location at that time. So, staff is recommending denial based on our Effingham County Code of Ordinance for multiple reasons. The total area used for the rural business may not exceed 1,000 square feet. The applicant put on their application that the office will be less than 100 square feet, and that outside storage will be less than 10,000 square feet. The other reasons include any outside area in which the business is conducted, other than parking, shall be completely enclosed in a manner that the business is not visible from surrounding property, and that the property on which the rural business is conducted must have frontage on a public road. This property does not have frontage on Little McCall Road, as you can see from the plat. So, staff is recommending alternative number two, which is denial.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions at this time? Yes, sir.
My name is Scott Thompson. This is five acres of property. I don't know, I can't see if you have the plat up there or not to explain.
If you'll take a step back and look up.
Yeah, well, it's, like I said, five acres of property there. It's completely surrounded by woods. My in-laws live in front. There's, I have a little spot behind the shed there that we're gonna be storing the porta-potties and the dumpsters that are on the yard. She said 100 porta-potties, and I actually have 24 dumpsters, is what I have, but they're all gonna be on job sites, you know? If they're sitting on the yard, I'm not making money. So, there's gonna be very minimal on that lot. Behind that shop, there is roughly half an acre that's cleared already. I'm not clearing anything else. Back in 2006, when I had this business previously, I was approved by the board at that time to operate the portable restrooms out of this location. So, requesting to have that again. I understand that, you know, the outside storage space is 1,000 square feet, which I'm gonna be way over that. I mean, there's no way I can be within that, but there's nobody around me to see this. I'm completely surrounded by woods. There's two acres between me and the subdivision behind us that's wooded. There's 10 acres, actually 11 acres, to the one side that's completely wooded, and then Warehouse Paper Mill owns the other property on the other side. So, again, like I said, I had been approved for this back in '06 to '09, I believe, operated out there before, and just looking to do it again until I get back going and find a commercial spot that's suitable for it as we grow. I give pictures of the truck and the dumpsters, everything is small, it's not like large 30-yard commercial dumpsters, they're small. They fit in the parking spots that are smaller dumpsters in the truck. My pickup that I drive personally is actually bigger than the two trucks that are using to operate the whole business.
Mr. Chairman, if I may comment, in 2006, the business was approved for the entire parcel at that time. This parcel was not split, and so it was actually for the parcel that has the frontage on Little McCall Road. So, that is why that parcel was able to have that business at that time.
Thank you, ma'am. Discussion from the board?
Were you using the same area before, when it was approved?
Yeah, this, it was, it's 12 acres that my in-laws own. When we got married in 2000, actually, I'm sorry, we built a house in 2014, they deeded us five acres and 13 to be able to build a house on it. And that same back spot is where we, you know, we had a mobile home there before, before we built the house, and I was operating the business out of there.
So, why did it go away? Could you split the property?
The business? No, I actually sold it, sold it years ago, and just starting back over 20 years later. And I do have, I've been working with a gentleman in Savannah, and a lot of business is gonna be down that way, too. It's where I can store, have just a small storage yard down there, and store some there also. But it's just more convenient for me right now, being the only, you know, employee to operate out in my backyard, because I'm, again, I'm on five acres there, and just a lot easier to get started that way.
So, all you should have there is your trucks and the, the equipment that you don't have rented out?
Yeah.
If the, if the conditional use was approved, are there additional buffers that would have to be created in order to allow that? Is anything being proposed? I know I said surrounded by, I just wanted to clarify, I just thought I was completely understanding, I think, on that aspect.
So, he would have to adhere to the buffers for the property, which AR1 to AR1 is 15 feet.
Is there any planting standard? Does planting standards would still apply?
So, they would, yes, sir.
So, there would be, there would be potentially some requirement? I know it's surrounded by forested area, but there's some buffer requirements for even AR1 to AR1?
So, originally, he was approved for a rural business?
In 2006, yes, sir. And that was for where you see on the map, 212. And that was, that would have been appropriate, because they do have the frontage there to Little McCall Road.
Which, I mean, I don't understa, I mean, I know the frontage is in the, in the regulations, but it's not a business where customers come to, so I don't really understand the frontage part.
So, it went away because this is now, he's asking to put it on a different parcel?
So, I think the business was sold, if I'm correct.
Well, over the time, we grew, and I moved and bought other locations, but I've, last year, I sold all of my businesses that I had, and now I'm starting over. But I've, last year I sold all of my businesses that I had and now I'm starting over. And this was the one I chose to start with. And so just trying to get started back out of the, the original place.
And the property was also split because he had the acreage deeded to him. So now he wants to have this conditional use for the 200 Little McCall Road.
So that the in-laws have the frontage on McCall Road?
Right, yes, sir.
And I do have an easement, a 60 foot easement from, on that property.
But I do think that's probably the limitation, why you were saying the, the aspect of why it had to have frontage is because the easement was for, I don't know the easement language, but residential access probably. So I, I know they're in your in-laws, but there was nothing submitted or anything saying they were fine with what's proposed, right? And just making sure.
Well, if you know them, if it wasn't, they would be up here right now. But I can, I can get, I can get whatever you need. Yeah, I can get whatever you need for that. I mean, it's.
So did you find any history of complaints from the original?
Uh, no, sir.
And if, this is, this is with us, right? This is the?
So rural business does go before the board of commissioners.
I can't remember that.
I can't either. So.
So remember, our alternative to is just because it's the criteria of the ordinance.
Yes.
So there could be not every use or request that comes before is gonna fit the criteria of the ordinance. That's what we have to do is give you that. You can choose to do otherwise while we massage the ordinance.
Gotcha. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? If there's no further discussion, I'll call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion for approval, is there a second? Second, Mr. Zipper, all those in favor of approval? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, boy.
You, you will go before the county commissioners.
Yeah, thanks.
Item three is a public hearing for David Clow. Request a conditional use for an agritourism business located at 3285 Georgia Highway 119 North. This is the third district.
Yes, sir. So the applicant is requesting our very first agritourism business request to open a plant nursery business. Garden slash nursery tours are permitted use within agritourism business. And you do have a copy, a printed copy of the agritourism business ordinance. He does have frontage on Highway 119 North and has provided the required concept plan and narrative for this proposal. Staff does recommend alternative number one with the following conditions that are located on your staff report.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
David Clough.
Can you just tell us about your plan or?
It's gonna be mostly a plant nursery. We will also do some produce, so we'll also have a farm stand there. Most of the plant nursery is gonna be wholesale. So as far as people coming there, it'll be, you'll have springtime and fall sales for plants. But for the most part, it's all gonna be a propagation nursery.
And by your drawing, it looks like you come in and go behind the house, is that correct? So it'll be in the?
Mostly, for people that'll be picking stuff up, it'll be mostly in the front. There'll be, on the drawing there, you'll see a farm stand to the left, proposed farm stand.
Okay, yes, sir.
They'll be picking it up ground there.
Okay. Do you expect a lot of traffic?
No, I don't.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one of the conditions does state that signs do need to be posted on the property that there'll be no parking along the right of way for Highway 119 because we do not want to clutter Highway 119.
Agreed.
So you're wholesale?
Yes.
Isn't the majority of the people picking up then wholesale are gonna be coming?
Well, there'll be some retail.
Well, but I'm saying, if it's wholesale, the majority is gonna be for some pretty big pickups, right?
No, most of the, it's propagation, so it's all small plants. A lot of that stuff will actually be sent out through the shipped, shipped out.
How will you handle five or six cars that pull in there? They're gonna park on your grass?
On the grass in the front there.
So are you part of that suburb, that neighborhood, Park Drive?
Part of what, sir?
I see a Park Drive, which is, looks like it accesses several lots, but your, your access is only on the Highway 119?
Correct, only on 119.
Any further discussion this time?
I just question, is, is, are there additional? I see the two, the conditions that are with the approval suggestion. Would, would there be a detailed site plan that they've gotta come back with or this is the point that this is yet?
So they will have to follow the agritourism business ordinance, so they will have to come back through for the sketch plan process.
I just wanna make sure you understood that. And then there is a buffer requirement?
Uh, yes, sir. So for this property and let me double check. 15, I believe, is the, is still the buffer requirement, so 15 feet on each side.
I just didn't want you to get surprised by that.
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Yes, ma'am. We may have some questions for you in a moment, sir. We, if you'll have a seat, we may. Yes, ma'am. Please.
Good evening.
My name is Susan. My legal name is Deborah Suzanne Fuller. I live at 105 Bark Drive. He's kinda, he's behind me with the way my house is facing. His business, I wanna know first and foremost, what is it gonna do to the property values of all of us in that vicinity? Especially seeing how it runs up the complete side of my property. And I got concerns on runoff. What kind of chemicals are gonna be used at this agritourism? And what kind of elements will it bring in? We're a tight knit neighborhood. We watch out for each other and nobody needs to mess around with my property. It says it's gonna be 15 feet off of my property. Is there gonna be any kind of something that I don't have to see it? Cause I'm in the process of getting my stuff together to look nice and pretty. And back there in the back of this, like I said, it runs the whole length of my property. And then what you're talking about warehousing, so you're gonna have big trucks, little trucks coming in there? Is he gonna be hauling this out? Cause I know exactly where the road is and all that other good stuff. I don't know if he's purchased that since the last time I saw people hopping around. And I mean literally hopping around, looking for the property markers. And I walked out there and, can I help you? And I'm looking for the property markers, so we in the wrong spot. It's right over there. I got all of mine marked, I know exactly where it is. And I just want to know what's gonna happen to our property? What kind of damage will be done to our property? What kind of runoff is gonna come onto my property? I got a fishing pond there. I got my well there. We all live out there on wells. And the water, when God decides to, or Mother Nature, pick your poison on that, to show out, it comes this way. And that's my way. And I don't need my drinking water or my pond, my fish killed. Getting old enough, I'm heading that direction anyway. I don't need no help from outside sources. So what's the lowdown on the hoedown? What do y'all think?
Anybody like to address that? I mean, in my opinion, as a scale he's doing it at, there will be no runoff and it will not affect your property values.
And what are we to do should things change up? Is there a bigger plan? What's it gonna do to our property values as a whole?
You mean, can he get, can he get larger?
Yes, and bring in a lot more, you know, as it says tourism. I know we're not gonna be walking down River Street at a candy store or nothing like that. But the larger it gets, I'm afraid it's gonna bring in, like I said, you don't know what element. I mean, everybody knows what's going on in this world and they don't need to be hanging around us.
I think this just fit under the agribusiness tourism, agritourism label. But, I mean, he's basically operating a farm stand, a produce stand. So that's just kinda labeled what was put on it, I mean.
Uh, yes, ma'am. So he's doing a plant nursery. It is small scale. It is not, you know, as of right now, and I'll let Mr. Clow speak to that. You know, it's not large scale in any sense. His application did say one nursery right now. So I, we can, we can have the applicant come back up and speak, speak to those questions if you would like?
Yes, I would like to, like I said again, I'd like to know what it's gonna do to our property values because now it's become commercial as far as I'm concerned. I got commercial running alongside of me. Is it gonna go up? Is it gonna go down?
Well, that's, I mean, if he would've done a larger scale, then he would have to be in a commercial zoning. Because of his size, this was just a, a more suitable for the area. So that, so that we don't start rezoning commercial property up north of Springfield. So, so the size, so do you have any additional questions? And we'll get up, get him up here to answer the, the runoff, the chemicals and things like that.
Yes, sir, I do have a few additional. Driving down 119, like I'm on a private road. And, and where he's gonna have this, is it gonna be well marked? The people aren't be turning down our private road and destroying our road? Cause the county does not maintain that road. I, we do.
Yes, ma'am, that was one stipulation that, that staff recommended be placed on it was the proper signage to make sure that they get on the right road.
Alrighty. I guess that'd be all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fuller. We'll get some answers to your questions. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Mr. Clow, could I ask you to come back forward, please?
What parcel was she at? 407-15B?
407 dash 14. Yes, sir, could you just speak on the chemicals you'll be using, the amount of chemicals runoff? You know, anything that could possibly affect her property or her pond?
Well, as I said before, this is more of a propagation nursery. So there's not gonna be any runoff. It's more like a backyard nursery. It's not, we will put a small greenhouse in. And the greenhouse is all for just growing out some of the small plants. It's all, all baby plants mostly. It's not gonna be, and there's not gonna be running, a lot of people running in and out. Like I said, the only times that I'll have public sales are in the spring and the fall. And those will be over a weekend. Most everything is all gonna be through shipped out.
And you believe you can get the proper signage out there to prevent people from using the wrong driveway?
Yes.
Dave, can I ask a question? Chair, sir. On the sketch that was provided, I guess the proposed site plan, there's a very specific kinda L shape. Yeah, there we go. This is in the dashed areas that's labeled growing area.
That's where all the plants in the greenhouse will be.
What's defining that shape?
Uh, there's like wooded trees. It's already tilled up, it was there when I got there.
So you're not proposing to clear anymore of the trees? This is staying inside the existing cleared area? Just fear there had to be some reason for the shape, so.
Yeah, you can see the little field on the overhead. So it's basically a garden with a greenhouse?
Kind of.
Any additional discussion? I mean, do you have any fears of it affecting adjacent property values?
No, I do not.
All right. Is there anyone else to speak? Closed public comment. Any further discussion? Thank you, sir. I'll call for, I'll call for a motion, motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Any opposed, motion carried by all. And he will have to come back forward through with the sketch plan correct.
Yes, sir.
So we'll have to define exactly what it's gonna look like, Ms. Fuller.
I just had a couple of heart attacks two days ago. Got a skin, I got to get, I've been here long enough.
Well, we're sorry to hear that, but God bless. Item four is public hearing for John Egan. Request a variance from ordinance 3.21.1 to allow for occupation of camper RV during home construction located at 128 Partridge Run, Zoned R1. It's in the second district.
Yes, sir. So the applicant would like to live on site in their camper while their home is, their home construction is finished. The residential building permit has been issued, so that process is underway. They also did receive temporary power in June. So they're, they're pretty far along in the, in the process as well. So staff is recommending alternative number one with the following conditions. That the camper may be occupied for up to 12 months during construction. And that once construction is completed and the certificate of occupancy has been issued, the camper shall be vacated and disconnected from any well and septic.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request?
I have a question. Has he broken ground? I mean, he got the electric in in June. This is December, it's six months ago.
Uh, yes, sir. So the house construction is, is underway.
Underway.
Yes, sir. He just would like to live in his camper on site while that is being finished.
For the next 12 months.
Um, so that's the typical timeline.
From when he broke ground?
Um, so this is the front, so it would be the 12 months from the approval. So that's the precedence that's been set for the camper variance, so.
We've had several of these recently, right? Relatively, but have any of them been in R1? Most of them have been in a different zoning.
I saw them in ARs.
Yeah.
And you're gonna have a few more coming too.
Well, I guess that's where I was going. If these conditions are ones we're comfortable with, is it needing to be debated every time?
I thought we were normally six months, but we kinda extended it out to 12 months.
Um, so the last couple, when, when doing the research for this, were 12 months.
I guess that was.
Cause we, we, we approved 12 months, right?
Yes, sir.
The original thing was six months, right? Or was it no, nothing at all? We just approved it for?
Um, so it started out with not a timeframe and went to six and then elevated to 12. And 12 was the, the most that has been given. But if you wish to.
Since, since the construction's already started? Cause he's getting 18 months.
They did not, they did not specifically ask for a timeframe. I went 12 because that's what the last couple have been. However, if you wish to choose that, you know, to change that condition, that is up to you.
Most of the 12 months are from, they're not, they're, they're just getting started. They're, they're, you know, they're.
Well, I think the reason we went to 12 is we have one or two up the north end of the county that we gave them six months and they had to come back and ask for extension because the house didn't get completed.
I think COVID slowed down a lot of that. When we started hearing a bunch of other deals.
But I think that's why we went to 12.
I mean, this up to the, this up to the board for the timeframe?
I'm dying with the state of 12.
I am, too.
If there's nothing further, I'll call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion for approval and I'll second for Mr. Thompson, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item five is a public hearing for Jay Malpin, Malpin Engineering Incorporated as agent for Oleg Mitnik. Request a variance from ordinance section 3.4.1 to allow for a reduction in required buffers of 150 feet to 125 feet located on Highway 21, Zone B3. This is the fifth district. Who got this one?
I do. So that correction, that should be to 25 feet, not 125 feet. So the applicant would like to reduce the buffer between the commercially zone parcel and the industrially, industrial zone parcel to 25 feet due to the lot depth and the amount of wetlands that are. um, due to the lot depth and the amount of wetlands that are present on this parcel. Um, the other thing that should be noted here, um, if you look at the screen, um, you can see the twenty-five foot proposed buff, buffer. Um, recently, we also did, um, the parcel that is behind this one. They received a hundred and fifty foot buffer variance. Um, this parcel is owned by the same person. Um, so part of this request for the twenty-five foot buffer, um, also comes off of that one because they have such an extensive buffer on that property as well. So, um, staff is recommending alternative number one.
Thank you, ma'am.
This is the property that's right along Highway twenty-one. It's cleared out now.
Yes, sir.
Any discussion, questions?
Is any of this based off the new buffer ordinance?
Yes.
I mean, this is less intense use to more intense use having to ask for a variance than a pretty significant one.
Right.
Let's hear from Mr. Malpin.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request?
Yes, sir.
Hey, how are y'all?
Good evening.
I'm Jay Malpin, Malpin Engineering. Um, yes, the, the property behind didn't receive a variance for the hundred and fifty foot buffer there on its side. So there is already the hundred and fifty foot buffer on the back of the property line. We just would like the front to be reduced to the twenty-five foot because it is a little bit narrower. Um, so that we can actually have a commercial use there as opposed. So, um, you know, with the way the ordinance was written, if we had done the entire parcel as industrial, we would've had a hundred and fifty foot buffer along the roadway and that would've been it. But with separating out, the staff wanted us to keep a commercial piece up front along the highway. That then a hundred and fifty foot on both sides gives you three hundred feet. So that's why we're asking for the variance.
Okay.
Mr. Malpin, is that gonna be, um, a truck sale business there?
We don't have a tenant identified as of yet. He's been talking to a couple of different folks. Um, one of the other building supply folks in the neighborhood have been talking about potentially having use there, uh, auto truck sales. Another person is actually, um, selling, um, sweepers for warehouse floors, which was a unique business, I thought, but they're, uh, would be selling the sweepers that go into warehouses and clean up. So, uh, but the actual tenant has not been identified yet.
So it's not an exit for his other parcel?
Correct. There'd be no connection between the two.
Thank you, sir. Anything further? Does anyone else wish to speak? Call for a motion.
Make a motion for approval with all staff recommendation.
Have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Thompson. All is in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Thank you, sir. Item six, a public hearing for Michael Emery, request to rezonate plus or minus two and a half acres from AR one to AR two to allow for a new home site located at eighteen hundred Oliver Kildare Road. This is the third district.
Yes, sir. So, uh, the new parcel will have frontage on Oliver Kildare Road, um, which is a county maintained road. Um, I have provided the list of permitted uses for an AR two zoning, um, on your staff report. Um, staff is recommending alternative number one, uh, with the following condition. That a subdivision plat must be provided to development services and recorded before the rezoning can take effect.
We're, we're doing that for everybody.
That's good.
Alright.
Good stipulation.
Any discussion? Is there anyone who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? If there's no discussion, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Thompson. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried by all. Item number seven, Kathy Messer, request to rezonate one point zero one acres from AR one to B one to allow for a small pizza restaurant located lo, on Long Bridge Road. This is the fifth district.
Yes, sir. So, um, the proposed development has approximately a hundred and seventy-five feet of road frontage on Long Bridge Road. Uh, Long Bridge is a county maintained road. Um, the required buffer between residentially zoned parcels and commercial zoned parcels is thirty feet. Um, the applicant is proposing approximately seventy-two feet. Um, the B one zoning district is designed for small scale retail and service businesses that center to, that, I'm, excuse, excuse me, that cater to the surrounding residential neighborhoods. Um, I have included the list of permitted B one uses in your staff report as well. Um, staff is recommending alternative number one, uh, with conditions that are located on your staff report.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you tell us about your plan, please?
Yes, we are looking at making a small pizza restaurant, um, on that land. We will put up a little thirty by thirty-four building. Um, there's nothing there at the moment. It's, um, it's been cleaned up and stuff, but we haven't, we haven't started doing anything to it yet. Um, our, our proposed amount of people that would hold is about forty-ish. We're gonna have about ten tables. It'll be real small. We wanna put like a wood oven pizza, um, in there, oven in there and.
So you live on this property?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, we have eleven acres. This is just one of the acres. Um, we have, we have the property behind it, um, as well. Um.
So it looks like you're moving, so parking lot's gonna be up toward Long Bridge, but you're, it's gonna be kinda off the thirty by fifty building?
Will be behind the parking lot. So the parking lot would be up against the road and then the building would be right behind that. And then we'll have a patio on the back of that building. Kind of overlooking where our pond is. So it'll, it'll, we have a pond back there as well for drainage and whatever else that.
And the pond's owned this piece or still in the parent?
No, but we, we shouldn't need, um, any drainage for it because it's a small, the, the amount of land that will be.
It's over thou, five thousand square feet.
Yes, if it goes over five thousand square feet, they will have to do the stormwater management.
You'll have to do something to consider from that standpoint. That's why I was asking related to that size. I mean, I know we're just talking zoning, right? But just to, again, that's why I keep asking buffer questions and stuff. I just want everybody to be aware of what it.
And we don't anticipate increasing traffic on that road. That, that road's pretty busy as it is. Um, it's a clear view to turn in and out of that property, so we don't anticipate any issues there either.
So I guess the convenience store and the other restaurant is just down.
Correct.
Couple parcels over.
Correct. So there's a residential on one side and then the commercial right on the other side of that residential. And then the Texco is across the street from, from that commercial.
Yeah, that restaurant's not in business anymore though. That was Southern something.
Right.
Simply Southern.
Right. Right.
I have two very important questions. What is the name of, that you're gonna call it?
We, we were thinking Journey's Pizza.
And the second question is, do you have any samples?
We do not at the moment. We're still working on it.
We've been trying.
We have been, uh.
But Hunt Brothers out of business in the gas station there.
Uh, they have some good pizza. We get it. I mean, we live right there. We do get that sometimes. Um.
Go there every Wednesday night.
But, you know.
Call out if y'all get approval, I guess, huh?
Yeah. I think it'll be a good, um, addition to that area. You know, there's nowhere really to eat right in that area and there's a lot of residential area. Um, you know, um, behind us, kind of on Ebenezer. Um, yeah.
Any further discussion?
I would just, I wanna appreciate staff putting the list of other allowed uses down. I think we should take a look at that and make sure if there's anything we're not comfortable with. We, if, assuming there's a positive recommendation made, make sure if there's anything we're uncomfortable with, we would exclude those. Cause you don't need the other uses, right? You're, you're just the pizza restaurant.
Yeah, just a little restaurant.
There's just other uses allowing B one that.
Yeah, no, I mean, no. It'll just be a little restaurant. That's no crazy stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I would say if it's approved, all other uses be struck.
I'm not exactly sure what the other uses are. I, I haven't seen that, but I, I mean, I don't anticipate that.
Chelsea, you wanna read it to?
Being an issue.
Yeah, so I can read it to you. Um, so the uses, um, allowed within the B one commercial district are personal and professional services, including clinics and studios, um, cafes and restaurants, uh, private clubs, lodges and community centers, dry cleaning outlets, uh, convenience stores, retail without gas pumps, um, childcare centers, libraries, mixed use residential, single built, single family detached dwellings, uh, government owned utilities and bed and breakfast lodging facilities.
Yeah. No, it'll just be a little restaurant.
Yeah, so I mean, I would recommend, you know, if, if it is approved, that everything but cafes and restaurants be disregarded.
And a sketch plan.
And a sketch plan.
Thank you.
Um, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request?
Thank y'all very much.
Good evening. My name is Paul Stewart. This area that your young lady and gentleman are wanting to build a restaurant in is residential. There, it's residential completely with the exception of a fuel station and a closed fuel station that have been in business for, or been located there for probably over forty years. We've been through with this same ordeal a few months back when there was someone wanting to build a business in the neighborhood and there's just nothing down there. There's no reason to have a business in this area. And my other concern is when the business fails, not if the business fails, what is going to be the next business that wants to move in to this location? Are they gonna wanna come in and maybe revamp the building or make a larger building? Are they gonna open up something that is really undesirable for a neighborhood? So that's just my two cents worth. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
How y'all doing? My name's Sean Emerson. I'm their neighbor to the left of them. So this pizza restaurant would be two lots pa, or three lots past me on the right. Um, I know that they said they're not really concerned with traffic on that road, but it just, I've been there for two years and two years, we've had two accidents with eighteen wheelers happen on Long Bridge and they shut the road down. So I'm, I'm concerned with the traffic that it's gonna cause, um, as well as I, I have two small children. Um, are they gonna be serving alcohol at this restaurant? Is there anybody, how late are they gonna be open? Are people gonna be coming to my property unannounced randomly? They already do that whenever they order like Papa John's and things like that. So those are my concerns where I'm at. So.
Alright, thank you, sir.
And just like the gentleman said too, with it going to B one, we're nervous about what, if it does fail, what would be put in there? Because once it's B one, any business could buy it. Thank y'all.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Stan Moore. We, my wife and I, Amy, live, uh, directly next door to this property. We live at ten forty Long Bridge Road. We also own the property at nine eighty-six, which is the old restaurant that's closed now. And we have, I, I'm not opposed to business whatsoever and, and I don't really know the messers, so it's not a, anything personal. But my son is all for it because he knows he can, he don't even have to cross the road now and he could get cheese pizza and all he wants, but. I do have concerns as far as buffer, um, curfew, noise, lighting, um, everything that's, especially distance from other residences. Um, there's a lot of concerns here and I don't know if, I know all of it can't be addressed now. But, uh, and I know there's another, uh, step to this process. So we do have a lot of concerns there because it is so close to, to our property. So that's pretty much what I have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um.
What?
Um, if I may, the, so the buffers, um, between a commercially zoned, if this were to get approved, and residential is thirty feet. Um, and also, um, if, um, one of the conditions, if, if added, they would, um, have to come back for the sketch plan process, which is where you would see a more detailed plan that would show things such as the lighting, um, and the other concerns that you do have for this project.
One other question I had is, are privacy fences required around in a residential area like this? This is a, a residential location on both sides of this business, if, if approved. And is it required to, you know, to fence or anything as far as, that's just a question that my wife and I had.
So I'm actually gonna, um, let Mr. Steve Kandler, um, if the chairman allows, to answer that.
So in the new buffer ordinance, um, fencing, uh, can be used, um, in lieu of ten feet of buffering. So in this case, you would have thirty feet of buffering and if they wanted to do twenty feet, then they could put a fence up for the other ten. Um, that fence can only be up to seven feet. It can't be above that without going through a variance through the planning board and the county commissioners. So it's not required, but it is possible and there is some advantages to using fencing over the buffering.
Those are, those are pretty much my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak, either in favor or against this request? I'll close public comment.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question of staff?
Yes, sir.
Um, you, you mentioned the buffers thirty feet, but they were accommodating?
Seventy-two is what they had shown approximate.
Okay.
What that, what?
So currently they're proposing significantly more than what the ordinance requires for this use.
Yeah, double.
Oh, the buffer you took up?
Right, yes. So, uh, I think that's great, but again, if we're gonna consider it and if it's part of that consideration, we've gotta make it a condition that it's beyond the thirty feet because otherwise that doesn't matter. And we could make a condition that there's a fence included and still be thirty feet, right? We could.
So any discussion? I mean. Go ahead.
Hey, are you saying that we should, um, make a special stipulation that it be a seventy foot buffer?
I, I.
He's saying.
I, I was just saying that's maybe something we could discuss before the motion, right? But it's, they are planning to accommodate it. It's just there's no controls to requiring it if we don't put that as a condition. Uh, if there's more than thirty feet that we would prefer to see, assuming there's a positive recommendation period. And I do think the discussion previously about limiting it just to the, the cafes and restaurants uses would help address at least two of the concerns that were brought up.
I can't get past the concern that, you know, even though I think this is a great idea, you know, starting a commercial, you know, expanding a commercial area in a, in, in a residential area. I mean, so help me with that.
Yeah, I am too. I'm having a little bit of concern about the fact that there's property right down the block that could be rented.
Well, I mean.
It's already commercial.
Yeah, the gas station is there, but, you know, I mean, at what point, at what point, you know, do you say yea or nay?
Can we go back to the zoning map?
Yeah, absolutely, I can.
So somebody could come in, rezonate R one and put how many per acre in there?
Homes?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, I, I agree, but it's a residential area.
But it'd be more in character with the area, but it'd be nine point seven six trips a day.
Yeah, I know.
Versus four point two trips a day.
I get it. Yeah, believe me, I get it.
I know.
Um, my concern is what's, when the neighbor wants to sell his for commercial and it's not something we're really crazy about. How do you say no then? Because I do love the idea of a little pizza restaurant. But when do you get to say yes and when do you get to say no?
I, I think the suggestion of limiting the uses that are allowed on the property is your, um, catch to the whole thing.
Well, that's huge, no doubt.
Yeah.
I think we should hold on to a fifty foot buffer.
Agreed. If it's gonna be approved, a hundred percent.
And Mr. Chair, I would just suggest to make sure that the sketch plan is one of the conditions.
Yeah. And that's a sixty-day process, too.
Any? Any further discussion? All right, somebody wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, um, I've been, I was for it, but I turned against it now, I'm gonna make a motion for denial.
Have a motion to deny, is there a second? Motion dies, I mean, new motion?
I'll make a motion for approval with staff's recommended conditions plus the following additional. That the, uh, that a sketch plan is required and that sketch plan shall show a fifty-foot buffer, not the standard thirty-foot buffer, to all residential uses surrounding as well as, uh, inside that buffer, I think there probably should be the privacy fence, so, add the requirement for the privacy fence.
About uses?
Oh, and I missed the biggest one, and limiting the uses to the cafe and restaurant, which is what's proposed.
Inside or outside of the buffer for the fence?
Somewhere within it, I don't think it should be right on the property line because that's impossible to maintain on the other property line side, so... No closer to five feet to their adjacent property line, but beyond that, doesn't bother me.
Height?
It's a long motion, sorry.
No more than seven feet?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no more, to meet, meet the standards of the buffer ordinance related to the fence.
Okay, just so we know.
Um, have a motion to approve, some discussion, is there any questions, discussion on this motion? Call, call for a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Smith, others in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries four to one. Um, everyone remember, January sixteenth, this will come to the county commissioners, this is merely a recommendation. They will have the ultimate final say, so, thank y'all. Item number eight, Kimberly Lopez, request to rezonate two point two-one acres from AR one to AR two to allow for a subdivision to create another home site located at one fifty-six Tishway, second district.
Yes, sir, so, um, the rezoning to AR two will bring, um, this parcel into zoning conformity. Um, the applicant would like to subdivide the two point two-one parcels, um, for a new home site. Um, Tishway is a county-maintained road and each home will be on a private well and septic. Um, staff recommends alternative number one, um, again, with that condition that a subdivision plat must be approved by Development Services and recorded before the rezoning can take effect.
All right, discussion from the board? Is there anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request?
Good evening.
Hello, I'm Kimberly Lopez and I just wanna point out that, uh, in our need to sell, uh, that no one could get financing with a manufactured home and a home on the site, it was too difficult, so we're wanting to split for that purpose and here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
And they already have a septic and a well apiece, so...
Any discussion, questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Have a motion for approval, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Higgins, others in favor? Any opposed, motion carried by all. Item nine is the ordinance revision, consideration of an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Part Two, Official Code, Chapter fifty-four, Section fifty-four dash three, Commercial Corridor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, uh, staff is recommending to table this item until the January planning board.
All right, um...
With input from Mr. Thompson, gratis.
This is the commercial one?
Yes.
Yeah. Is there any discussion, is there anyone who wishes to speak either in favor or against this request? Any further discussion? Call for a motion.
Make a motion to table.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Thompson, others in favor? Any opposed, motion carried by all. Sketch plan, Mr. Jay Moplin, Moplin Engineering is agent for Oleg Mitnik, requests approval of sketch plan for the Dicky Track located on Highway twenty-one, zoned I one, this is the fifth district.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the applicant is requesting approval for the sketch plan for Dicky Track, Highway twenty-one. Um, you did vote to approve the variance earlier in this meeting. Um, staff is recommending alternative one with the conditions that are listed on your staff report.
Thank you, ma'am, Mr. Moplin, do you have anything you wish to add to that?
No.
Nice, any discussion from the board? Yes. All right, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve sketch plan.
Motion for approval?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Thompson, others in favor of approval?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. Item two is a sketch plan for Brandon Long, is agent for Brayley Investments Properties LLC, requests approval for a sketch plan for Waste Doctors LLC located at eight seventeen U.S. Highway Eighties on B three, this is the first district. Ms. Mathem.
Yes, sir, the applicant is requesting approval for a sketch plan for Waste Doctors located on Highway Eighty. Um, previously, there was a stop work order issued for this property, um, a conditional stop work order. A conditional removal of the stop work order was issued on December first and on December fourth, F and K Development Services did remove that stop work order. Um, the buffer in the front on Highway Eighty is a ten-foot buffer with the thirty on the other property lines. That ten-foot buffer will need to be landscaped in accordance to the, well, all the buffers will need to be landscaped in accordance to the buffer ordinance.
Did it?
Staff is recommending alternative one.
Okay, so there was no home on this that they were gonna operate as an office?
Correct.
Right.
And this zoning came through just earlier this year, is that right?
Yes, sir, Ju- the July eighteenth, Board of Commissioners.
And that sketch plan meets any and all conditions that were placed on it from a zoning standpoint?
Yes, sir.
No, no access on to Dogwood Way, is it?
Correct, it is prohibited.
And does he have to create buffers or are they...
He will have to replant and he, we have been in contact with him regarding his replanting of his buffers.
Yeah, that's a good example of what we just talked about previously.
The timber was harvested?
Well, it was cleared without our knowledge.
So, he's gonna plant a buffer?
Correct.
Any additional discussion?
I mean, I guess the site plans, when they come through for review, you guys will put a requirement for G dot permit for their access point on Eighty?
Yes, sir, and he has already spoken with G dot.
Remember, you know, that has to be part of the condition of the rezoning site plan until we get the amendment through.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, if it's a commercial drive, they've got to get G dot, we, the county does not control Highway Eighty.
That's correct.
It says a G dot permit and G dot encroachment permit, I just wanna make sure that was clear that...
It's part of the process.
It's a drive potentially.
Yes, sir, so typically, when we get to the land disturbing activity and the development plan, um, permitting, um, through EOM review, that is, um, that is typically a condition of their review.
Yes.
Good, Mr. Thompson? Call for, call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, others in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried by all. What else?
That's it.
Meeting adjourned.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.